No further discussion, so you're not...
In favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so motion carries, so we are not going to be able to add this at this time.
This evening we come for the adoption of the annual report, the presentation of the annual report by city code, the city manager's office. To prepare a report that verifies and gives an overview of the various accomplishments of the city government in the previous year. While the report always comes over my name, it is not my report. It's the report of your department heads, your division directors, it's the report of 550 employees. They are the ones who provide the service. In this meeting this evening and in subsequent meetings, you will hear from department directors about their accomplishments and also their challenges. You will hear about the fact that Carmen Miracle was selected as Clerk of the Year by her Clerks Association. You will hear about the Military Community Census Report that Glenn and others have led the effort to change the Federal Register. You'll hear about purchasing improvements that finances have made that are part of your three E's program of efficiency, effectiveness, and economy. About the health plan changes that many people, including the HR people and you, have worked on. You'll also hear about the work of police and fire, especially in the use of Narcan, as they have really utilized that to save lives relative to drug overdoses. You will hear about the Beirut Memorial Grove and the work that Michael and his folks in Parks did to create that new monument. And you will hear about the Office of Livel Neighborhoods, and yes, you will hear about the splash pad. Tonight, though, I'd like to take just a couple of minutes relative to my goals for the coming year in the city manager's office. Here are the seven goals that I put in the overview. The first goal is to identify programs and opportunities to continue with the mayor and council's three E's programs of efficiency, effectiveness, and economy. We are going to continue to face more and more stringent budgets. Each of you in our budget deliberations has pointed out the challenges that we face as a growing community. We are going to grow. We are going to primarily grow, though, from a tax base based upon commercial. The years of annexation are years that are no longer with us. The years of residential development have slowed. And therefore, it is essential that in all that we do, we look for ways to become more efficient, more effective, and more economical. The second goal for the coming year is to work to establish programs designed to continue the caring community initiative of Jacksonville. Caring community has been part of the motto of the city of Jacksonville much longer than I've been here. We have to make sure, though, that it doesn't become just a stale tagline. We see nationwide the challenges that our country are facing of people getting along. While we certainly have been fortunate that we have not faced some of the challenges that some cities have faced, we have to make sure that we're proactive, that we find ways to show that we truly are caring, and that we go out of our way to make sure that we are good hosts to the military families and military personnel who serve here. The third goal is to refine marketing and recruitment efforts to enlarge our pool of diverse candidates. I'm very pleased to tell you that about a week ago, I had the opportunity to meet seven new firefighters. Two of those were African-American, one is Hispanic. The others were what I would call white Americans. They're all Americans. We have to make sure, though, that the efforts we're putting in place are attracting a diverse workforce, and that that diverse workforce is given an opportunity for long-term employment here. The next goal is career development programs to promote training and skill development of our current employee base. Many times, you are going to hear tonight about programs that HR and others are doing to develop the skill set within their own employment ranks. It is essential that we, as an organization, constantly give opportunities for employees to advance their skills and likewise advance their opportunities. The next goal is general efforts to continue to beautify the city. Many of you have noticed that on Huff Drive, there's dirt in place of grass. Well, the good news is, the grass was there, the dirt is there, and very shortly, you're going to start seeing understory plants and very nice crape myrtles and very nice landscaping. And then, over the next several weeks, you're going to see that expand all the way up Jacksonville Parkway. The leadership which you have given to beautify the city has been noticed by many people, including your own employees. I had an employee stop the other day and just say to me how beautiful the Freedom Fountain, the Flag Garden, the area coming into downtown is. You should be proud of that. We, as an organization, should be proud of that. But we need to make sure that in the coming budget and in the coming year, that if we can squeeze out an extra $5,000, an extra $25,000 to put a few more trees, a few more landscaping, that we do that. You may also have noticed that directly across the street from City Hall, that we have now put in the first of our pedestrian bulbous. It's over in front of the parts store, and it improves safety. That is part of our beginning of some experiments we would hope you and the public would weigh in, because if you like that, then over the next several months, we're going to take very limited resources and use city employees to install more and more of those bulbous so that these four blocks here can be beautified. The sixth goal is cooperation with the new county leadership and elected county officials. Three weeks from now, there will be many ballots cast, and the result of that will be not only national, state, but also county implications. Part of my job as the manager is to make sure that we develop excellent relationships with the administrative staff, and obviously, part of your job is to develop excellent relationships with the new elected officials. And that is going to be a team effort. The CMO leadership group has talked about hosting some meetings between the city council and the newly-elected commission. So we're hoping that in January, early February at the latest, we'll be able to have a meeting, a joint session, between the city council and the new county commission. And the last goal is to prepare a balanced budget. Every year, that is where we start the budgeting process, is on the basis that we have to live within our resources. There are no guarantees, because at this point, we haven't seen the expenditures. What we do know is that the first quarter reports are very close to coming in. Gail is not letting me spend any money, so that's a good step in the right direction. But again, we are going to all be faced with a balanced budget effort. I would welcome the opportunity, over the next several weeks, for you to also identify goals that you'd like the city manager's office to address. In the coming weeks, I know that the city council will be having an evaluation session of myself as city manager and the handsome and talented barrister, Mr. Carter. I would certainly welcome the opportunity, in that session, before or after that session, to receive input about directions you want your city government to take beyond these that I've identified. At this time, I'd like to get into the actual department reports. As you will recall, we have, the organization is so large now, that we really have broken it into two groups. Last year, you heard primarily from utilities and IT. This year, you're primarily going to hear from the general fund departments. And with this, I'd like to turn this seat over to Carmen Miracle, the Clerk of the Year, and ask her to come and give her report.
Did you sit here with me?
Well, I'm gonna let you sit closest to him. By the way, she had her twin grandsons in town this weekend, so she's in a great mood.
I forget how to use this, you may have to use it for me.
You're asking me to use technology?
Yes. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you about the City Clerk's Office. As you can see here, our primary mission is customer service and to fulfill the duties outlined by the North Carolina General Statutes and those that are signed by the city manager. One of our key functions is to make sure that the city is in compliance with the Public Records Law. We also manage all of the council's official documents, such as the minutes, the resolutions, ordinances, deeds, the city code, those sorts of things. We also work with the council on scheduling your personal appearances and preparing proclamations and special awards. We provide support to the city manager's office, and we assist the city attorney with some research and with some statutory requirements such as street closings, voluntary annexations, sale of city property, et cetera. We also work closely with the management team and the department directors to prepare and organize your council agenda and to plan your council meetings and to ensure that the city is in compliance with the open meetings law. We provide data management for all of your advisory committee meetings. This includes the application process and appointments, reappointments. We also provide for them an orientation meeting for new members. We've also been able to work on the joint city council and advisory committee summits each year, and we coordinate and plan the committee volunteer appreciation dinner. For the, for, since its inception, the Clerk's Office has been providing clerk-to-the-board services to the Tourism and Development Authority. Previously, my deputy clerk performed those duties, and now, I myself, am performing those duties. The last time we talked about the city cemetery, which is a subject close to my heart, we talked about the generosity of Mrs. Serikovich, who bequeathed her estate to the city with the stipulation that the proceeds were to be used for improvements at the city cemetery. Since that time, we have worked together, the city manager, myself, the executor to the estate, Mrs. Waters, and mostly the city attorney and Deanna Treble, who is with our engineering department, led the effort to, and as you can see in these pictures, and if you've been by there lately, you see that some work is going on. The installation of the pillars, the brick pillars for the entrance and exit gates have been installed, and portions of the fence have been installed with more to come. As council knows, the former mayor's committee for persons with disabilities has transitioned into a standalone 501(c)(3) agency, the Ontario Commission for Persons with Disabilities. Yet, we still work with them on a project the city started many, many, many years ago, the poster poetry and essay contest, which is provided to all school-aged children from kindergarten through 12th grade. And we also plan and execute the, a project that is close to my heart and also very important to the city and to you, and that's the annual veterans' recognition ceremony, which is coming up here shortly next month. Okay, we're very excited about a project that we're going to work on in the coming year, which is a citywide records management program. We currently follow the state's retention and disposition schedule, but we don't have a records, a uniform records plan that addresses how we manage records on a day-to-day basis, in particular, electronic records such as social media, text messages, and those types of things. So that's something we'll be working on, not just myself, but with a team from all of the departments. And lastly, I just want to briefly speak about the changes in the CMO office and the Clerk's Office. As most of you know, the city manager's longtime executive assistant retired this past July, and that allowed the management team an opportunity to think about how we might structure the office to meet the council's philosophy of the three E's: efficiency, economy, effectiveness. And with that in mind, the administrative staff have been assigned to me, and we feel like this restructure under one supervisor will allow us to work more effectively as a more cohesive team. It'll allow for cross-training between the two departments, and we think it will provide for a more even distribution of the workload. That's all I have, council. I'm not going to talk about Clerk of the Year, other than to thank you for allowing me to participate in the Clerks Association, which allowed me to earn that award.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Questions or thoughts about the Clerk's activities?
How far are we, are we from completing the cemetery, Vince?
I would guess that we're about 50% of the way.
It looks really good what's been done, so.
We're gonna have to make some adjustments, because some of the, for lack of a better term, some of the variations in height that are currently being caused by the topography, we need to address. The area along Hargett Street is probably 80% installed, and then we will begin the area along 24. The corner feature, which will actually have the name Jacksonville City Cemetery, is currently being sculptured, because that will actually be a piece of granite that will have that sand blasted in. So there's still the corner piece that will go in. But as Carmen said, Ms. Kovitch and her estate made that possible. And once completed, we will have a very appropriate ceremony with you all invited.
We have some plans for a commemorative plaque for the bequeathes, is that generosity?
The answer is yes. Our thought is to possibly build a reflection garden and actually call it the Kovitch Reflection Garden. And we've identified two potential sites, both of which are relatively close to where she and her husband are buried. So that will also be one of the last parts of what we'll do there.
Very good. How are you on your fulfilling the previous city clerk's goal of filling up all the cemetery costs?
Well, they've, they've all been sold, but we haven't filled them all up yet. You own one yourself, so we don't want to fill it up anytime soon.
Thank you.
And just for the record...
Even though your views may not be shared unanimously.
And just for the record, we do not have a sign that flashes no vacancy. Glenn, Community, Communications, and Community Affairs.
Good evening, council and mayor. Indeed, our unit has dual purposes combined into one person, and the four media specialists as we are there. And of course, it is to really, at the end of the day, tell the story of the city of Jacksonville, and through community programs and community affairs, to help improve the city. And we facilitate transparency that you wish by the actions that we take to tell your story and to continue that going as it is. In an overview, that informing the public is part of a large thing that we do, and through social media, through the website, and through all the other activities that we do, is to tell them what is the city. We help to advance the brand, to make sure that people, when they see something, know that it's from the city of Jacksonville and that it has a city of Jacksonville flavor to it. And obviously, through Community Affairs, to tell that story in a way that it mixed in with the, with the narrative that we're doing for all the activities that the city of Jacksonville supports. Among those things is that we tell that story annually when we have the Chamber Leadership Day tour, and tell them why those memorials are there and how this community came together. The mayor will be doing a much more elaborate description of that when he addresses the Beirut Memorial Observatory on October 23rd at 2:00. And of course, one of the things that we were proud of as our accomplishment was helping to organize both the Fourth Marine Division Final Muster and the 75th anniversary of the Second Marine Division, the latter of which produced that record-setting parade on downtown Jacksonville, and the former causing an emotional appeal, seeing those people who had fought in the Battle of Iwo Jima meet for the last time and to choose to do so aboard Camp Lejeune was an awe-inspiring moment, as it was. For the Tourism and Development Authority, we oversaw the Sports Destination Study and its final report, and the completion of the first phase of a strategic plan for telling the story of Jacksonville and why you should come and visit here. As the manager mentioned, one thing that we're happy about is how that our message about that there needed to be a change in the census rule about residency of, of our military members who happened to be deployed on the day of the census, at this moment, we look as though we have prevailed and that that will go forward in the way that it wishes, that we wish to see it go. We also help with the Environmental and Appearance Advisory Committee, the Memorial Advisory Board, the Civic Affairs Committee for the county, and we provide the logistics support for your meetings and some, and council meetings such as that. The G-10 operations are part of what Media Services does daily. There are 225 events in the last fiscal year that, that we covered, including your meetings and other meetings and the special events that take place. As mentioned, we also operate your website, which will be doing a, in the next year, we'll be doing a redesign. Every four years, we're, we're part of a redesign of that. And the surprise part of our life has been the print pieces. We didn't expect to still be doing as many print pieces as we are, but the demand for print pieces is extraordinarily high, and it does facilitate the advancing of our brand and the pieces that we put out. And of course, we get involved in many special projects. Among the things that you might be interested in is there were 435 unique visitors to your webpages.
Say that again.
435,000 unique visitors to your webpage, and that most, many of them were looking for employment, but the next highest number of them were looking for utility billing, you know, how to pay their bill and do things, which, of course, we want to help facilitate as much as possible. We have 32,000 likes on your Facebook page for the city of Jacksonville government. We actually operate seven different pages for the city. The top number of likes was the alligator story, which is no real surprise that it went that far, but, you know, the fact that we walked in that day, passed the alligator, and till a woman that was just out exercising found it was, you know, an amazing thing. But 83,000, you know, shares, likes, and views of the Second Marine Division parade, and more than 25,000 for the splash pad. And these are the folks that help you tell the story about what it is that you do and to do that every day. Our goals and objectives for this year are to continue telling that story and to continue with our branding of the city and its destination as a place to come and stay overnight, and of course, to, now that the Tourism Development Authority has set aside in their budget an amount for wayfinding to advance that project as it is. So we stand ready to serve you folks.
Questions?
I'd like to ask a question in regards to social media, Glenn, on our side, and then about billing. Do you handle, or who handles the actual social media portion, the Facebook and the Twitter? Is it internal, or do we use someone external?
Yes, it is internal, yes. Oh, no, we do that internally.
And my question, a leading question to that, is that efficient? Do you find that, I know that with the League and several others, we've changed that because we were finding that there was gaps, and those gaps would lead to sort of inefficiency. So if you're gonna be in it, you've got to sort of be in it.
You're right. We, in, in the after-action report for the most recent storm, it is our opinion that Facebook has almost become the equivalent of what used to be the Citizens Fund Bank. We responded to a lot of people in the middle of the night who had questions and things, and we were able to do that. We had a shift system, so we were all working mostly from our homes and doing so to answer and make sure those questions got answered. So we think it's very efficient for us to operate it, because we have the answers, we can get them quickly. Chief's people were, Chief Yanar's people were efficient at providing us with hourly updates that you also got, and we were able to share them with the public as they came in and so that people could know what they're doing.
Do you get a lot from Twitter also?
We don't get as much from Twitter. Perhaps that's a demographic issue, as it much as it be, the following government, but we do tweet regularly and answer those messages that we get through DMs and things such as that.
Well, I thought that, I thought the videos you guys did, particularly the chief and several others, that went out during that storm were really, really good, so good on that.
Well, we, we know how the matrix can be affected by use of video and a picture rather than just plain text, and so we, we want to try to play that as much as we can.
And the other question was with billing, utility billing, is, will there, will there be a time where people can do reoccurring?
Oh, that's a finance question.
Because I know that that's...
Yes.
It's doing very well, but I know there's still some...
Yes.
Areas that we can improve in that area to make it easier for people to pay that way. Chair, you have some?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that, that it's not friendly-facing, we are working on a replacement that we have, we want friendly.
At one time, I was concerned about the amount of money we spend on media operations and getting G-10 started, but I've come to be a strong believer, along with many others, that this city, for its size, and probably even size doesn't matter, we probably provide a more open look at what's going on in City Hall than any other comparable or larger city. And I get many comments about people who watch G-10, about the council proceedings, and it's one of the best investments we've made in terms of opening up the doors of City Hall, so I congratulate you and your staff for keeping that alive and well done.
Well, we simply act on your will. You folks had to make that decision, and we simply are fulfilling that.
I guess, is there any way you could know an approximate size of your viewing population?
The grocery store test is the only test.
Oh, yeah, okay.
But I would, I would make the comment again, because of the directions and specific goals that you have set regarding transparency, you'll recall that the advisory boards are now all meet in City Hall, and their meetings are broadcast live. I mean, we have done everything that we can in the way of advisory boards, whether it's TDA, whether it's MPO, whether it's the, you know, sewer advisory committee. Every one of our committee members understand that they have a responsibility to do their business in the public, in front of the public, on TV. And that's the goal you all set, and as Glenn said, that's the goal that we've accomplished.
I get a lot of positive comments about, you know, from people that do view the broadcast, and there is a big, a big slice of population out there that are regular.
I will admit to you, I'm always amazed.
Always amazed.
If no other questions, Finance, Fleet, and Metering. Gail, you're in Ed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Y'all know how much I like to talk, so just settle in, and we'll be here a few minutes, okay? I asked them, could I do one slide that said no, the end? That's the story, but I got a big no myself that time. For Finance, Fleet, and Metering, there are several divisions. We have Administration and Reporting Division, Accounting, Billing and Collections, which includes metering, and then Fleet. We have 40 total budgeted positions in Finance. The Administration Division, we handle things such as the comprehensive annual report and the audit, which you all will be seeing very soon. We do capital asset tracking and depreciation, budget, and we assist with the CIP on the financial side. We handle investments, debt management, and there are six positions in this area. In Accounting, they're responsible for contracts and purchasing, grants and payroll. In Accounting, they're responsible for contracts and purchasing, grants and payroll, and in this area, we have nine budgeted positions. For Utility Collections, Utility Billing Collections and Metering, we do all the billing for the city, including utility bills and any miscellaneous billings. Metering reads the meters to produce the bills, they provide maintenance to the meters, shut off, shut on, reconnects, and all the maintenance activities. In the Customer Service and Collections areas, I thought one of the interesting facts was we collected $281,000 under the Debt Setoff Program over the last, I think, about nine years. We report them to the state, and if they're due a refund of any kind, or if they win the lottery, we get their money if they owe it to us. To me, that's fun.
That's not a fault.
There's a lot of money sitting out there that could be.
There is a lot, yes. And in this area, there are 14 budgeted positions.
And before she leaves that slide, I took the opportunity to take the number of customers and the number of bills between the meter reading and the utility, that was 229,000 business transactions. 229,000. We're not a small operation, and through that, you collect roughly $40 million in revenues.
For Finance and Metering, our accomplishments this year, the big one for me was being able to refinance the revenue bonds, the 2009 and 10 revenue bonds. We had a net present value savings of almost $2.6 million. The actual cash value was about $3.1 over the next 15, 16 years. So we were excited about that.
Yes.
We received the Excellence in Financial Reporting Award for the 25th year. We just keep it up from the folks who went before us and set up something for us to follow, but I would hate to be the first one that didn't get the award. We've continued our purchasing improvements. I don't know if you all remember, we started with the Police Department. They had a position that they decided to transfer to Finance, and we're doing purchasing, some centralized purchasing for all of Public Safety. And we had another opportunity, the beginning of this past fiscal year with a vacancy, to add another procurement specialist who's now helping IT and some of the other divisions that didn't have admin support. And for Metering, their maintenance program has made it possible to read about 99% of our meters remotely, so they don't have to walk and read those manually. And for FY '17, of course, our goal is always excellent customer service to the customers. I think that our customer service representatives do a great job of that. I could not stand at that counter and listen to the people who are upset when they come in, but I think they do a great job. We want to maintain compliance with all regulatory requirements, maintain our system of internal control, and look for opportunities to improve that, maybe continue our purchasing improvements. We have begun a project to look at the purchasing policy, but that's a big undertaking. And then, I didn't put on here, but the meter readers are going through a training program to become certified in backflow prevention, so they are also doing that. And then, for Fleet, they provide preventative maintenance, like oil change, tire rotations, that kind of thing, and repair services for electronics, hydraulics, anything else that comes through the door that needs to be fixed, inventory management, and interdepartmental billing to all the departments. There are 11 budgeted positions in Fleet.
And just for a sidebar, this past several weeks, we had the annual auction, and Ed, what was your results?
The original estimate of the value was $150,000. When we finally got everything sold, the city made $184,000. So we had some good stuff out there, larger stuff than we normally do, had some heavy equipment, larger trucks, and they sold really, really well. We did good.
So in addition to Ed's used equipment lot, this year, they installed a new 12,000-gallon diesel tank, which improved our efficiency a little bit. I think we talked about this in the budget, that we couldn't take a full tanker load of diesel fuel sometimes, and we were having to buy locally, which costs a little more. And I think Ed would agree, this has been a great asset.
It has been. In this last storm, lines maintenance and water supply, they bought their trucks with the fuel tank in the back, they came down, filled up from our site to keep all the generators filled up, so there wasn't that going out and buy something, pay so much per drop. So, and we were never in any danger of running low, so that bigger tank really, really came into its own for this hurricane.
And also, in this past year, they were able to maintain their ASE certification. I don't know if you remember, but when they first got certified, they were one of, like, three or four municipal garages in the state of North Carolina, two of which were Mecklenburg County, who were ASE certified, so they've maintained that. There's a few more now, but still not a bunch. So I'm proud of Ed and them for keeping the certification.
Should be.
And this year, they also increased the percentage of hours they were able to bill to departments, and they increased their preventative maintenance completions within their schedule. And for the next year, safety is always goal number one for Fleet. They actually have finished installing the new pumps. Ed, do you want to tell them about the new?
The original system that was put in when the building was open in 2005 was a suction-type system, so under each one of the dispensers had a separate electric motor that drew the fuel from the tank. That was an inefficient way to do it. We've just upgraded now the submersible pumps in the tanks, and these are just true dispensers right now. We moved from a mechanical dispenser to a digital, and the dispensers we put in are actually dual dispensers for both sides. The last part of the fuel upgrade will happen probably next fiscal year to upgrade the software. Our current software can only handle four fueling positions, but the upgraded software can handle up to eight, so then we'll be able to put the hoses on the opposite side, so we'll have eight fueling positions when the whole system is up and running. The whole goal of this was to be able to track everything from inside the office, totalizer readings, how much fuel is in each tank. So in the capital improvement, if we ever go to a second fueling site, everything will be able to be read from one location. You wouldn't have to manually do stick readings or totalizer readings, so right now, it's working very well.
And also, for '17, they continue to provide scheduled preventative maintenance as required and maintain the ASE certification. That's all I have. Do you have anything else, Ed?
What's the projection on when the audit will be presented to council?
I talked with them today, and they don't anticipate having the actual document finally approved through their system until the middle of November, so it may be December before we actually get a presentation from them.
The reason I was asking is Mrs. Thomas called the other day and said that Mr. Thomas had finished his budget reading, and he was getting nervous at night, so she wants to schedule it.
We could help you, have you help us proofread. We can always use that kind of help.
Mr. Bitter, question. Years ago, too many to think about it, but.
I don't remember.
You don't? It was even before your time, actually. I don't know if it's still a requirement, we had to go throughout the city and do a pen and pencil inventory of all equipment, computers, everything. At one time, we were looking for the possibility of going to like a bars code system that could be electronically read. Is that still a requirement, or what do we do about it?
We don't count every single thing. Different departments do, like Public Safety has an inventory of the weapons, IT inventories, copiers, and printers, and that kind of thing, but we keep track of assets above $5,000, and we do send out a list to each department every year, twice a year, I think, and ask them to verify that they still have those things and that they're still in work in order and all.
Any other questions for Finance?
Thank you, Gail.
Good job, Ed.
Did you have a bicycle on the inventory?
A bicycle? Who's got a bicycle?
We're not talking about the bicycle.
I asked for a Mustang.
Good job.
Kimberly's going to talk now about Human Resources, please.
Mayor and Council, thank you for having me. I always enjoy the opportunity to tell you what we're doing in Human Resources and then take any questions that you might have. This one?
The other one.
The other one that's worn off?
I know, you went to FSU. It's the one on the right.
We're not going to go there. I'm not going to read you our mission, but just to let you know that our focus is really on recruiting, retaining, and developing a diverse and a very high-performing workforce, and that is what our focus on. And we do that in really six primary focus areas. We focus on recruitment and selection, on talent retention, on training and development, compensation and classification, performance management, and health and wellness. Those are the broad categories, so I wanted to just give you some highlights of each of those six primary areas, if I may. We're going to start with recruitment and selection. We actually processed over 6,630 applications, had 79 new hires, 36 internal transfers or promotions, and then thanks to you, we did look at an intern program. We had two wounded warrior interns. One was in Human Resources and Occupational Safety, and the other was in the water plant. Actually did so well, we ended up employing them in our land treatment center. And then we had one transitioning veteran who's still doing transportation, so that program is working well. The next area that I wanted to focus on is in talent retention. We have a career development program we've put in place. We also, just to expand on that just a little bit, our career development program, for example, in many of our departments, let's just take a Maintenance 1, for example, in order to be Maintenance 2, someone had to vacate that position. Well, we came and talked to you about a career development program, which meant if I can meet the criteria to be a Maintenance Worker 2, shouldn't I be able then to promote? People, what we looked at in our exit interview program is that people are looking at promotion and adding value, and they feel a career development program was a way to do that. So we implemented a career development program. It's been very successful so far. We've done that in several departments. You'll see it as a goal in 2017 for expanding that into other departments. We also, under talent retention, had an internal talent identified for Public Safety. What does that mean? We worked with public services and identified several individuals that were interested in working in Public Safety and Fire and Police, so we had already high-performing employees that might want to look at that as a career. So we were fortunate to go into Streets Division Sanitation and talk to many of our existing employees and see if any were interested in a career in Public Safety, and that worked for us. At this point, we've hired two and moved them over, so we're excited about doing that again. The other piece of talent retention, of course, is leadership development. I'm sure you're very familiar with this. Our original, as we called them, 19, who are alumni now, and we have a new group that's moved into our Leadership Development Program, and I'll talk a little bit about that when we talk about training and development. We also have a focus on creating a culture of inclusion. I know Dr. Woodruff has been talking to you quite a bit about that. We've worked with UNC in regard to the barrier analysis, and we also are participating on our Diversity Task Force, so we're looking at 2017 and being very engaged in that process. We are also focusing on the next area, which is Training and Development. You remember when we presented this not too long ago, and this is our comprehensive model? We have done HR training for supervisors. What does that mean? That just means a lot of what our supervisors have to do is Human Resources. Typically, about 80% of the work that most supervisors do is working with their people, so we want to make sure they're doing all the right things. So we went out and did training with those individuals. We had actually over 99 supervisors that the Human Resources staff trained on FMLA, Family Medical Leave Act, FLSA, Fair Labor Standards Act, and workers' compensation. We also had 20 supervisors go through supervisory skills training. We partnered with the Community College and really crafted a program around what we wanted that to look like. The engagement from leadership was phenomenal. Dr. Woodruff and Ron Massey helped kick off those programs, so there was real buy-in from the leadership, and I think that that was important. We also had customer service skills training. We had retirement education sessions, and I was really kind of surprised at this number. Our retirement education sessions, we had over 109 people attend, so people are really looking at financial planning in the next few years, so that was important to know. And then we implemented an online safety program. A lot of the feedback we got, particularly from Public Safety, Mike Canaro's group is, you know, pulling people out for that face-to-face training every year can be complicated, so we have moved to an online safety training program that's been fairly successful at this point. The next area, Compensation and Classification. Again, we have developed a career path process. I talked to you a little bit about that earlier. We're excited about that. I know the employees are excited about that, so we want to continue that as part of our comprehensive training program. We did have new Fair Labor Standards, it's FLSA, Fair Labor Standards Act. There were new regulations that were implemented this year. This is very interesting for us and many other, well, all employers really across the nation. There is a threshold that you have to meet to be exempt. There's exempt employees and non-exempt employees. For lack of a bigger explanation, let's just say it's hourly and salary. In order to be salary or exempt, you have to meet a threshold. That threshold has always been 23,660. I think it hasn't changed in 20 years. So it was moved to 47,476, which is a huge jump, and that required us to do a pretty extensive assessment of our workforce and then test out a lot of our positions against some of the duties tests. So we did that this year. The interesting part of that, we want to make sure, of course, we're always in compliance. The interesting part of that is that it's going to be moving every three years, and it looks like about 3% every three years, so that threshold will change. We'll keep you updated on that. More to come. The other thing, of course, is our ongoing assessment of our market competitiveness. We actually participate in dozens of surveys. One of the biggest we do is the North Carolina League of Municipalities Salary Surveys, and then we respond to those, and then when we get those response, we get those surveys back, we evaluate those results, and we look at where we are in every one of our positions to see how we rate. So we're working on that constantly. The next area is Performance Management. We have a Performance Management cycle. I'm not sure if you know this, but we redesigned that to make sure we're all kind of on the same page. In August, we do training with all of our supervisors because we want to make sure there's consistency in ratings from department to department. Then the supervisor completes evaluations in September. Those evaluations, not the actual documents, but the scores are then shared with the city manager because we want to make sure there's consistency across departments. Then in October and November is when the performance discussions happen with the employees, and then those evaluations are sent back to Human Resources in November. And we try to keep a consistent process around that every year. Finally, Health and Wellness. Our Health and Wellness, you know, it's interesting because it used to be called Benefits Administration. It's much more focused on health and wellness now because that drives our cost. We have 513 employees that are in our Health Benefits, just the Health Benefits piece, which is 969 covered lives. We did this year have a lot of plan design changes to our cost structure. We did change our deductibles, we changed our emergency room co-pays, we changed our prescription co-pays so that we could be a little bit more competitive, and we needed to for our cost structure, as you know, we're self-insured. That did happen this year, as well as our HSA. You know, we have 40, remember the Health Savings Account we talked about extensively? We had nine members, we've gone to 45. That was a big jump, and that really is kind of the trend. I think also, everyone is familiar with ACA, Affordable Care Act, or Obamacare, that required a lot of reporting. We reported for the first time, and we're proud to say it was submitted without any errors or penalties, that we were probably in the minority with that, so we're glad that went well. And then Wellness. Our Wellness Initiative went from 70 to 180 members this year, and I think a lot of that can be as a result of the working group. We created a working group for Wellness that is represented by every department. It helps with the It helps with the communication. We also started, I think, one of the unique programs we have is called a Fitbit Activity Group. There's 147 people in the Fitbit Activity Group, and they really compete with each other. They have little groups that compete with activity. So that's been fun. Those are the six areas that I wanted to focus on, that HR really has as our primary focal area. Our goals and objectives for FY '17, we want to continue our comprehensive training program, which means we're going to continue to do the building leadership capacity with the new set of, the new group, I think we're at 22. And we want to expand our career development program. We've piloted it, it's successful. We want to continue to do that so people have an opportunity to grow their knowledge, skills, and abilities. We are customizing our wellness program, as you are aware, because we talked about that, and engaging Blue Cross Blue Shield, and we have a program manager that's working with us. So part of that will be implementing education programs to improve our health benefits utilization. A lot of what that person is doing now is about education. So we're hoping we can dive into that deeper in 2017. We have implemented NeoGov. NeoGov is a new applicant tracking software, well, I should say applicant management software because we're not just tracking applications any longer, we can now manage the process. What we had before was okay, but we wanted to do something that was more comprehensive, and this follows our three Es, and we're excited about implementing that. And we've already started the process of implementation, and it's gone fairly well. And then the final thing is our culture of inclusion. We are looking, we're working with our diversity task force, and we're looking at what we can do differently in recruitment, selection, and retention as we move forward.
On the NeoGov program, we put together a cross-section all the way down to crew leaders to understand what were the current problems with those, you know, with recruiting and reviewing applications. So that NeoGov program was actually built from the frontline supervisor up. It wasn't something that, if you pardon the expression, the people in the glass house designed. It needs to be designed by the frontline supervisor, and that's how we did that. Very good report. Any questions on HR?
Good job.
Let's have one more, and then we'll take a short break. Can we do this in five minutes, Mike? I doubt it. Public safety. First thing I'd like to point out is that the chief is wearing a white shirt tonight.
That's right. Mayor, Council, I appreciate the opportunity to talk about public safety. Basically, this is our mission statement, and it boils down to what is, is provide great public safety. Make sure that we're providing for our safe community. Just a little bit about the Department of Public Safety, the fire services, we have 88 budgeted positions. Police services, we have 166 budgeted positions. We answered 132,000 calls, police calls for service, that's a 17% increase over last year. Fire, we answered 42,415 fire calls for service. Our 911 center answered 134,000 calls for service. 99.53% of those 911 calls were answered in 10 seconds or three rings, which is the industry standard. And I think one of the things that's important is, we usually don't talk about the telecommunicators, but that's the first line, the first entry point to the public safety system. And answering those calls in less than 10 seconds or three rings is very important to get a first responder to the scene. And what we've done over the last several years, and we'll talk a little bit about that, is that we focused on getting a first responder, whether it's from a firefighter or a police officer, getting those first responders to the scene as quickly as we can. Our average response time from 2011 to 2016 for police services has dropped 12%. Average response time for fire is 4.50 minutes. Our investigative-
Let's say that didn't come across as 4.50 minutes. You meant four minutes and 50 seconds. That's a lot better response.
Okay. Thank you. I'm trying to get it done in five minutes.
Well, right now, you're on average of 4.50.
4.50, okay. Our investigative division cleared, or had 7,605 cases. We cleared 5,500 of those. We had 16 people named in federal indictments. And I think that's been some of our success in reducing violent crime in our communities. We've used the federal system to indict people for serious crimes, either the gun or drug-related, serious drug-related or gun crimes. So 16 is quite a few. And the difference in the federal and the state system is, in the federal system, if you get a year, you serve 365 days. So there is a benefit to using the federal system, and we've been very successful in that over the last several years. We have four fire stations, and they performed 231 child safety seat checks. We did 1,700 fire inspections, 56 in ETJ. Fire and Emergency Service answered 3,775 emergency calls. 61% of those were EMS-related. Some of our accomplishments, National Light Out, we had about 10,000, even though it rained later in the event, we still had a good showing. In our third annual Running with the Law, we had 224 participants. The money for that goes to Special Olympics, and they are very appreciative of that. So it was a very successful event again this year.
And that's up, year one, I believe, we had a little less than 60 runners. And to see that come in three years up to that large amount, and the amount of money that was raised is quite a compliment to the department.
And, you know, there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of talk in the country about, about police services, and we've seen things in Ferguson and even in Charlotte just recently. And I think overall, one of the things that we've been working toward is how can we reduce use of force, use of force in our community and address some of the needs. 50% of all use of, of all use of deadly force are people that are mentally challenged. So we looked at that, and we've been working toward that. Obviously, we added the police crisis counselor, we appreciate that. We've trained about 60 of our first responders in crisis intervention training, and that's all to address our community's mentally challenged individuals. And I think, I think that's been very successful in the reduction of use of force. We had about a 17% reduction in use of force incidents over the last three years. And I think a lot of it is how we've trained our police officers and the implementation. We have 98 patrol officers. Our goal is to train all 98 in crisis intervention training because it has a de-escalation piece in it that is very, very effective and very efficient. And we think that that's going to improve or actually reduce the amount of uses of force we have. The other thing, we've had a 32% drop over the last three years in police complaints, citizen police complaints. And I think a lot of that is how we talk, there's a story I'll tell you. I got a phone call from an individual whose son was schizophrenic and actually ran from him when he was taken to appointment near Ensign Memorial Hospital. And he ran into a restaurant, locked the door, wouldn't come out, and then he ran out of that door and into the, into the grocery store close to there, Food Lion, and was scaring people. Well, the officers arrived, the crisis counselor arrived, they were able to de-escalate the situation, get him to the appropriate treatment, and it was a very effective way. And the father called and said how appreciative he was of the patience of the police officers and our crisis counselor. And I think those are things that, just that story, we answered around 900 calls last year where people were mentally challenged. We intervened in about 100, or 300 involuntary commitments last year. So this continues to be a challenge for us. One of the things I think that, working with, with you all, we had this discussion, and that, and we've been moving forward about some type of treatment center here in our community, a residential treatment center, where we can bring, bring folks like that that need treatment, and they can be given the proper treatment. You know, right now, we have, we have little choice. We can either take them to jail, or we can take them to the emergency room. Both places are not appropriate for these mentally challenged individuals. So we're going to continue to work on this over the next several years. Lives saved, I think this is, we had seven lives saved this year. That's 18 saved since 2012, when you gave us permission to, to increase the, or change the way that we responded to medical emergencies. So I think this program has been very successful, and it permeates throughout the organization. Like I said, the 95.3% answered within three rings or 10 seconds, or 10, yeah, 10 seconds? That's, that goes toward getting that first responder on the scene as quickly as we can. And this is just, this is just the results of, throughout our organization. An officer is writing a ticket, and he hears the heart attack call come out early, it's somebody's lucky day. They get, they get to go, and the officer responds. So the firefighters, we look at how long it takes them to get their gear on and get out of that building and get to those, those calls as quickly as we, as possible. And we've been very successful, not only in, in those medical emergencies that we're talking about, but the Narcan Administration. We have, every first responder carries Narcan now. And the Narcan is, is used for people with opiate overdoses. Since January, we've administered 11 doses to eight different patients. And those patients most likely would have died had they not been administered that. So every first responder carries it, and they respond to it, they've used it, and it's, it's been very effective because of the heroin. Yes, it is. So, so we have dose, every officer carries them. It's a, it's a spray up the nose, and it, it's an antagonist to opiates, or opioids. The fair and impartial policing, the diversity and inclusion that we've been working on with HR and other city departments. Every police officer in the department went through fair and impartial policing. Fair and impartial policing is a class that basically discusses people's biases. Everybody has biases, but how do we, how do we address those biases, and how do we, how do we police as fair and impartially as we can? So there's classes for supervisors, there's classes for police officers. Every officer went through the department. And we got a lot of good comments. It was, it was good training just to talk about, just to bring up about, about biases that individual people have, and how do we address those, and how do we be as fair as possible as we're policing. The Fire Academy, we started that several years ago. That's a partnership with Coastal Carolina Community College. It gives us a ready pool. We've, we've got some volunteers in it as well. It's a ready pool that we could, that we can use to improve our diversity within, within the Department of Public Safety. The Public Safety Explorers Program, we're partnering with Sandy Run Baptist Church. That program is to get young people involved in public safety. We've got, we've got several, several in the class right now, and we think that we need to encourage our young people to think as public safety as a option for a career Citizen engagement. We did the church safety seminar, the coffee where the cop has been very, very popular. Our dog walkers program, which is like a community watch program that we're in, in our fire prevention efforts. Again, I think part of our community engagement, we've actually seen, like I said, a 32% drop in, in citizen complaints. And I think a lot of it is because of that citizen engagement that we're, that we're engaged in. Our computer forensic examiner, because more and more crimes are related to computers, cell phones, we have, we've sent somebody to the National Computer Forensic Institute. The Secret Service sponsored us. They provided us all the equipment, and we do forensic examinations, not just for the city, but the county and the other small municipalities in our area. And it might be anything from a cellphone, looking at the information on a cellphone, to looking at the information in computers, to looking online for predators that are online. So that computer forensic investigator went to several months of school in order to learn how to do that, and he's very, very effective in his, in his position. Our goals and objectives. One is to reduce crime by, and I think that, you know, I've talked to you about being proactive, and we can, we can, we continue to discuss that with our police officers. We're using the crime mapping program so we can target key areas within the city where crime occurs and trying to reduce crime in those particular areas. So we're going to continue to do that as one of our goals. Our goal is to, to reduce crime as much as possible, and we're continuing to look at the trends, the crime trends, what we have, and how we can reduce those. Decreased force by, by the officers, I think, you know, we've talked about that 17%, but we can still do better. We, we are working right now, our accreditation manager has been working on changing our use of force policy to look at de-escalation, to look at a goal of the sanctity of life in, in the use of force. That's going to require us to change the way that we do, to do business, and it's going to take some time. So we're working on that. We're working on a training program that's going to, that's going to refocus the way we train people in use of force, in a, in a hope to even reduce those, those uses of force that we have now as much as we can. And I think we're still, our goal is to still develop some kind of method to deal with mentally challenged individuals in our community. I think it's, I think it's a serious problem in our community, and we need to continue to, to work on that and to see what we can do. CIT training is just one piece. The crisis counselor is just one, one piece, but we have to continue to look at, at ways and things that we can do to address this challenge in our, in our community. I think we're, we're looking at an ISO inspection this year. We're also, we're also continuing to work on accreditation for fire. We just finished the, our police onsite, and we are, our communications division is, is in the accreditation process. So we think those make us more effective and more efficient, and we'll continue on those processes.
You might mention what an ISO inspection is.
That's the, the North Carolina Office of State Fire Marshal comes in and inspects the fire department, basically gives it a, a report card grade, and that grade affects the homeowners, the fire insurance premiums for homeowners and business owners in the city. Has a, has a direct impact on that.
Also evaluates other things, too, the alarm systems, water supply.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The whole process, by evaluating the fire department, they're looking at three primary things. One is the communication system, one is the water supply system, and the other is the fire department equipment, personnel, and training.
Where are we at on the body cameras?
That's a, that's an interesting question.
Does that change since the new law took effect in October by?
Well, the body cameras, now, of course, we are in the process right now, and we took some grant money, actually, in replacing our in-car camera systems. And in-car camera systems are, they're probably 10 years old, and it's time to replace those. A lot, a lot of changes in technology, a lot of changes in, in the, the system itself, you know, going to an HD, which makes things a lot clearer. So we're working on that process. The, the body cams, we still, part of the issue is going to be the storage of that data. An officer that's wearing a body cam, the body cams that we would purchase is going to use one gig of data per day, per shift. So when you take 98 patrol officers and you put that on there, it's going to be- So when you take 98 patrol officers and you put that on there, it's going to be, it's going to be rather expensive. Charlotte spent $1 million on the cameras. They spend $2 million a year on the storage for that data.
But I thought that new law was sort of indicated that non-controversial tape wouldn't have to be stored.
According to the records, retention law, it has, it has to stay for a set period of time.
Even though, even though it's not available to the public?
That's true.
Has that been worked out yet as far as the hard fast rules, as far as retention? Or is that still up in the air?
Well, retention is by the state, North Carolina, 30 days. So an officer who has a body cam on has to keep that data for 30 days.
So have you calculated the total amount of data that you're, you're saving over that 30-day period before you can purge? And that's not even counting if you have a case that has to be put in reserve.
There's two issues. The first issue is that we're already retaining quite a bit of data with the in-car cameras. Most of our incidents occur outside the car, and they are being, they are being videotaped by those, by those in-car cameras. So we would not, and, and part of the issue is you can't eliminate those in-car cameras. So that is taking a tremendous amount of storage space now. So in order for us to implement the body cams, we'd have to virtually double our storage space, which is going to be rather expensive. And we would have to keep that data for 30 days. The state law really didn't talk about data retention. All it talked about was the ability to release that data, okay? It gives the police chief some option to allow people to see the data, not to release it. The only way that it can be released is by a judge's order.
Let me comment on this. Several weeks ago, we had a meeting with Ernie Lee and with the chief and with the city attorney, and we talked about the new state law. One of the things that we decided is that we're going to have a workshop, your next workshop, November the 9th. We are going to have Ernie Lee and the city attorney and the chief give you an overview of our current protocols and how those, how those protocols are impacted by the new law that, that goes into effect.
It went into effect.
It went into effect, okay. And so I think that, that you will, you will appreciate the workshop of November the 9th. More importantly, though, we feel it's important to get out to the public what the new rules are. People need to understand what the rules of releasing this information, what those rules are before you have an incident. If you go back and look nationwide at the instances, there have been different responses in the community based upon the release of information. And people want to know, why is it that in Tulsa they did it this way, but in Charlotte they did it that way? Part of it was human decisions, but the vast majority of it was legal requirements. So what we want to do on November the 9th is to give you and the public a good workshop that explains the new law, how we are required to implement that new law. So we look forward to doing that at the next session.
Different states have different requirements, and, you know, some states that have very open records, records laws have actually discontinued using the cameras because of the number of requests that they have gotten. So this bill was supposed to balance those things. There's some good things, and there's some things that, that probably should be changed and probably will be changed as, as, as the, as we move forward on this.
Just an observation, your Narcan, what, 11 administrations to eight individuals? If the person is not conscious, how's a determination made to administer it?
In, with, with Narcan, there's no, there's no, there's no contraindication. So you can give Narcan, if somebody's unconscious, a lot of times we will give it. And it's interesting that you, that you picked up on that because, you know, we've gone to, to a particular house, administered Narcan, it's revived the person, they've gone to the emergency room, and then we've gone back there several days later and administered it again. So, you know, the, the drugs that they're mixing with, fentanyl and other, other opioids, I gotta make sure I say that word right, opioids, are very, are very, very potent. And it, it just depends. Even heroin, you know, heroin comes in different concentrations. So somebody that's taking heroin today might think, well, you know, I'm taking this much, and they end up overdosing, and they end up basically just stop breathing. So it's, it's a serious issue in our community. It's a serious issue nationwide. Jacksonville was rated number 12 for opioid abuse in the country. Fayetteville's right above us. Wilmington was number one. So this eastern North Carolina has, has some challenges as far as heroin is concerned. And I think some of those indictments that we talked about, those 16 federal indictments, had to do with heroin.
Plus, a lot better system of dealing with opium overdoses than the old-fashioned way of, of the adrenaline injection into the heart. So that would be, you could have some really serious contraindications, you know, with that. It's good that we have to. How about the AEDs? Are we still, we still have those in the community?
Those, yeah, the AEDs, the AEDs go, you know, we implemented that program several years ago. That's, that's the reason that we have as many saves as we have. That's been a very effective program, and I think that, that it'll continue. Every emergency vehicle that we have has an AED in it.
I think that's probably one of the best moves we've made, is to have those in the vehicles.
And, and I think that, you know, working on the response time for those emergency calls and, you know, I, I actually had some reservations that the officers wouldn't like. You know, if you're writing a ticket, you just put, you know, you leave. And they, they are very, very adamant that they, they think that this is the right thing for them to do. So if they're talking to somebody about a dog, a dog running loose, and they hear the heart attack call down the street, they're going to respond, they're going to tell that person, hey, we'll, we'll come back, we'll take care of your barking dog call, but we're going to respond over here first. And I think that's been very effective for us. Plus, I think the closer relationship between police officers and firefighters, and they're working together on those EMS calls, has been, has been very effective in the, in moving the treatment forward as, as they respond to these calls.
Chief, we're at the 4 minute 50 second line.
Okay. Well, I only have one more slide. And that's develop a career succession program. And in fact, this week, we're doing leadership in police organization, in public safety organizations, which teaches, teaches our, our first responders the most effective way of, of managing emergency providers. That class is a three-week class. It was developed by the IICP with the Department of Navy, or, excuse me, Department of Army. And so it's, it's a, it's a good program. We're also still involved in the EFO and the FBI Academy and the National Fire Academy in training our folks so that they can be as, they can go to those state-of-the-art And I think the, the last one, you know, we've, we've talked about the station alerting system, which gets those calls out a lot quicker. We're looking at a power phone, it's called power phone, or a way to ask certain questions and to streamline the process of questions that we ask to, in our dispatching process to even speed that three minutes up as quickly as we can so we can get vital information to those first responders. So those are some things that we're going to be working on. The CAD-to-CAD system that we're, we've been discussing with the, with Camp Lejeune for, for quite a while, we're still working on that process. We've been working with them on our, on our emergency buttons, you know, for the firefighters when, especially since we're responding to their fires, they're responding to our fires, and we're working as one team. So the 800 system has allowed us to, to work more effectively together, and we're going to continue to work on that.
So have you had any cases of how the interoperability works, like the gate?
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah. We've had, we've had a lot of cases where the interoperability with the base has been very effective, especially in the fire ground, you know, because they're, they're there. And even, even with the police, we've been able to communicate much better on certain incidents.
I know, I mean, years passed, you know, you had the gate out there, you had people fleeing from crimes that may have been committed to get on the base, but by the time you communicated with the base, you know, they were safe back in the barracks, probably fast asleep.
Yeah, that's been very effective and, and more efficient for us. And I, and I think, you know, part of that, you know, we've, we didn't really talk about the domestic violence issues that we've been working on, and part of our, part of our work has been the partnership that we have with Camp Lejeune, where we call and, and they have a cooling off period on any domestic violence. But the radio system has helped us do that because, you know, we, we, from the scene, we can call PMO and say, hey, look, this, this military person is here, we need to, to have some discussions. And, you know, we've had very few serious domestic-related injuries because of that, that partnership we have with them.
How long you been here now?
12 years.
12 years. And this is a graying hair type job, it's still black. Are you sitting there calling?
Wait a minute, what, what's this? When I came here, I had no gray hair.
We're getting a little personal now, aren't we?
Just stating the facts.
Before we open up the questions, I would like to take a moment to personally commend Spencer. Every time we have any type of hurricane event, he is the one who really leads the EOC. Now, while we didn't activate the EOC because we didn't think the storm was to the degree that was necessary, he is the one who led that effort, and I personally want to thank him. Well done.
Excellent job.
Questions that you might have, police and fire, public safety? If it's acceptable, let's take a five-minute break.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief. Questions, sir?
All right. We're back in session. Dr. Woodruff, do you have anything else to present tonight?
There are no other business items on your workshop. The G-10 staff did inform me that at the beginning of the session, that while you were live, there was no audio. There was a request by the county to add an additional item to your workshop agenda. That item had to do with an EOC expansion and a lease amendment. Council took no action on that and did not place that on the agenda. Therefore, that was not discussed this evening. Beyond that, we have a city council meeting at 7:00. Thank you for your attendance this evening.
We'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.